Well mate, we've arrived. Wasn't a bad drive was it? Couple of hours from Le Havre. What do you reckon to this thing?
Very impressed, terrific.
Lovely looking water, it really is. I think we're very lucky that Michelle's actually let us have this for this weekend. It's really good. These blooming kids, I tell you what, you can't hold them back can you? They're off and looking around the lake already. And I thought they was gonna stay up here and have a cup of tea with us but they're off and I think they'll be setting up all the way around here. Down that side, that's where I fished last time. When I was here in April, there was about ten of us on then when we fished then. Which was I think the first time any English anglers have actually fished here. I fished about halfway down on that bank, out into the lily pads there. Can you see, just where those pads are down there? And had a right result, was only here for a couple of days and had nine twenties and three thirties. Not bad is it? Just for that short period of time. He's got some good, good fishing here, they are very nice size fish.
What is the stock of the lake Andy?
Oh hundreds, I don't know how many he's got in here. He's got plenty of them, lots and lots of doubles. The, you know, generally speaking, hopefully the lads if they get it right and the place is fishing well, they'll be catching fish from sort of fifteen to twenty pound. There's a lot of twenties, a lot of thirties and I think the largest that's actually been caught, been put on the bank is fifty-one pounds. But I think it was by a German or a Dutch guy so, there's some real whackers in here. It is great.
And got some grass carp as well I believe.
That's right, we had a couple when I was down before. I don't know if there's any real monsters but I think they've been caught to about sort of twenty-five pound. I had a couple, I had one just into doubles, had a couple of small ones about seven or eight pounds and another one I think ten-four. Which was lovely, I had a couple of cats as well on boilies so yeah, be prepared for one of those.
That's right, let's put our fingers crossed.
I don't know if you realise, this is a very unique situation because for most of France you can't actually night fish.
Oh is that right?
Yeah, but because this is a private water and I don't know how they do it, whether they negotiate with the local police or what they do. But you're actually allowed to officially night fish this and it's a new, neat situation. So you know, the lads haven't got to pull in at night, we can fish all the way through which is, which is great. It's superb stuff. Only if you notice the name of the lake, A Spangly Rouge, Red Lake. So red mire maybe, French red mire, who knows?
Let's hope so.
Let's hope it comes up to these anglers' dreams because they was ever so excited on the boat wasn't they? Didn't think I was gonna get any sleep last night. But this is called La Pucier, this little village here. Which is only Michelle's house and just a few sort of farm workers' houses around the place. So it's, it's good and I think he's gonna do us a barbecue tomorrow night so how about that? He's really looked after us.
Right.
For any English anglers coming to France for the first time, it's all a bit daunting for them. Some of these massive great waters like Salagu and Cassine. This has got to be a good starter for them because he really is now catered for English anglers. And in fact, it looks like the English lakes doesn't it, it's all intents and purposes. And he takes ten anglers at a time. And I think he's gonna do a very good bit of business with the English guys. And it's so near Le Havre, it's a night ferry over so you're fresh when you start. You haven't got all those hours drivers you have down to the south.
That's right.
And there's big carp in here. Well there you go Mark, well done. How big was your best before this one?
Seventeen.
There you are, twenty-two pounds, fantastic. Gosh, that was a lump just jumped out. What did you catch it on?
Um, double, was it? Bird food.
Bird food. What sort of rig?
Uh, helicopter.
Helicopter rig. Now you're gonna pick that up, what a cracking fish. Give you a good take?
Yeah, one too bad.
What about the fight?
Strong fight.
Yeah? Plodding about, god, a lovely fish. But you're a bit pleased with that then?
Definitely.
Yeah, well worth coming.
Definitely.
Excellent stuff. A peculiar tail, it's not split, this was obviously born like that. Got no middle, aye?
Let's have a big smile Mark.
Fantastic. Yep, beautiful scaling round here, look at that. Lovely, huge great sovereign scales, magic. Yeah. Well done mate.
Cheers.
Good stuff, drop it in now.
Can I just get a picture?
Hold him up a touch, that's lovely. Smile. Isn't that pretty? Look at that, alright, keep your hand over its eyes for a minute. Gonna have a lot of trouble with that one. That was the one you had in the margins wasn't it? Right along the bank there. Beautiful patterns, weeny little scales, yeah. Look at that, that's perfect isn't it? Straight out of the mould. Really, really lovely looking fish. Hold it up for the cameras. I think you got a few fish in your swim you know? After all the fish crashing about last night, not surprising they went off this morning. Muscles on that. Beautiful. Beautiful.
Just round a touch.
Fishy perfection.
Open the, open the blind. Just lift it up slightly Mark. No man. When it's ready. That's the one.
Fabulous. They're good in here, I'm gonna hold their dorsals up for you don't they? Pop him back inside. Not that one no. It's a single. So do the same again, come round this side and then you can come round that way. Just pick him up, take him out the way. Yeah, they're lovely.
There he goes.
Beautiful. Well done, twenty pound four, yeah, hold it steady at that.
Yeah.
Great, down you go, beautiful, well done mate. Excellent. Nice one. Beautiful fish, yeah we're gonna hold it up. There you go, just stand outside. Nice, pretty, 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 well done. Lovely. Superb.
Mint condition as well.
Yeah, absolutely, it has a good scrap as well, it really went. Beautiful, well done, you're caning them aren't you? Go on in, back you go. Oh come on, I'm getting bored. Well you don't think it's cold out here? Have this up. This is a bit of a precarious situation that we're in here at the moment. It's a bit thorny.
I'd say I watch a lot bigger than we salt.
Yeah, it's a cracking looking fish. Look at that, oh, worth going in for. If we can just put it on this unhooking net, I don't want those scales, I want my own. We just put it in the...
Grass on the top there. Some grass on its gill plate Andy.
Oh yeah, nice one.
Now put your hand under the anal fin there. Alright. Okay. Got him? Actually I think that's about as far as you're gonna lift it.
Tell him forward.
He won't be able to. Alright, I'm just gonna get out the picture, you alright? There you go.
Hang on.
Big smile.
Hang on a bit.
Let's have a great big smile at the camera.
Alright.
Hang on, hang on. Smile John. Go on.
Wait a minute, I want one more.
Soap, soap the sack so we can squeeze more over.
Watch that fish, put your hands on it. Put your hand over his eye. I need to get there again. Just over it. Thirty pound two.
Well done. Well done. Good lad.
Well done John, give us a smile, give us a smile, that's it.
Well done. Right, it's every bit, can you hold on to that? Thirty oh two.
Right, all look at the camera.
Come on now, smile you, that's it.
Alright.
Tremendous Andy, well done mate, well done lads.
Alright.
One more for your mum, come on, one for your mum John.
Let's have a look. Alright. Okay.
Congratulations all three of you. Oh yeah.
Big smile.
One more time. Oh yeah, I'll do, I can do another one.
Lovely. Right, now what you have to do with this, big kiss.
Kiss it, hang on, hang on.
Come on, big kiss. Oh, ain't you a beautiful looking fish. Uh, young James is into one. There's a very good chance that he's only four foot six of him and he's gonna go water skiing. You alright James?
Yeah, he's just moving slowly.
Moving slowly?
Yeah, he's just moving slowly.
Keep it going, does it look a good fish? It hasn't done much.
No, it's still a bit early about, slow.
Great. Do you need waders over there, are you alright?
Yeah, I've got waders on.
Okay. Are you gaining any line?
No, not now.
Can you feel the fish still?
I'll keep that in second stream.
Still feel it?
No, really, I think it's moving.
Slacking off a minute and see if it'll actually swim away from you. Slacking off a bit, yeah. He's the other side of the lake.
Well that's where I could see my eye.
Has he got the line clear to you now?
No, yeah you've got fish on.
Go on.
Hang on, my hand's in that.
Oh well, not to worry. You can't win them all. Actually, I'll leave it there, that's not too bad yeah because it's, they're gonna come out a bit there at night aren't they? It's not that far short of the pads anyway. Oh, great.
Go on, hit it, hit it, hit it.
No, no, go on, let him do it, let him, go on.
You got it?
Right, go on, in you go Ryan, good mate.
Well done.
Keep it going. Oh, magic.
Well that's what he's doing actually.
Twenty-two twelve. Twenty-two twelve. Well done. Is that personal best?
Yep, yeah, just over two pound.
Well done matey. Gonna hold it up for the camera, is that the same rod as you had the other one on?
Well, I missed the run earlier this evening and that was on that rod. But the one that I had yesterday was on the middle rod.
Cracking looking fish, complete difference to the other ones isn't it?
Yeah.
Nice one. Well done.
Lovely.
Good scrap?
Yeah, yeah. Got me snagged in the pad, but just a bit of even pressure got it out, you know, you can feel it working its way through.
Well done. Excellent.
Pulling once more.
What ones are they, she left it on the rod? God.
That was one of your nicked strawberry yogurts Andy, the ones that he dropped in the forest that just nicked them all.
You nicked one of my strawberry yogurts boilies? What did I do with landing it from the last one? It's super. Oh, brilliant. Smashing fish. Looks, spots and bits, right? How great. Right Ryan, can you just move it?
Oh, um, land, you know, landing it out of the way.
That's it. Sticking it out the way. Put your flap on your unhooking net over. Just for a sec while we get ourselves organised, that's right. Okay. No, it's one, if you can, yeah. Right, hold that like that, great. Right, put the unhooking net over.
Twenty-three exactly.
Twenty-three exactly, well done. They're going up by ounces these, aren't they? Great stuff. You can have a quick pozy pozy with that. Yeah, could you put that on the bed chair? Pop that there. Right, come in, come in. Deal yourself down. Which the way to do it, it's better to go up by ounces at a time, alright? Alright? Excellent. You ain't gonna sleep a lot tonight are you? Brilliant. Well done Ryan, great stuff. Oh, great. No, no, go on, let him do it, let him, go on. Right, go on, in you go Ryan, good mate. Well done.
You know why I'm getting all this though, because I've paid the rate.
You've been throwing money in this lake again. Four p, what do I know that, they're French carp, you meant with francs?
No, but I said to the rate, do you pay English, I said, oh yeah, we'll change it up.
Get a good exchange rate then.
Yeah.
Steady, steady easy go. Nice one. You alright?
Yeah.
Yeah. Combination off the clutch and back winding on your one.
Dum dum dum.
That's it, nice. Spiritual, nah, they're lovely carp. Amazing amount of power they got aren't they? They just don't get caught, that's the difference, you know, with our English fish where they're being caught all the time. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they do in some respects, I know some of them fight hard. What's that, you've got a shop leader on there?
Yeah.
Yeah. God, he's fast isn't he? Here comes, lovely. Well done. You'll get good at this, won't you? A pretty little one. Oh, nice one. Lovely. See, you don't need all these bent hooks. Pretty, pretty. Lovely scale. No, I don't think it'd go double. Do you wanna just take that net out of the way and if you just hold that a minute Ryan, I'll zero the weight bag in, which one's the weight bag? Has he got in? If you just hold in still. You've got those scales Mark. Great, thanks. It's the nose end. Tailing, okay, right, one, two.
Do you need it Andy?
Can you take it, that's it. Pop that just over his head. Muscles, good signs of a fish that's never been on a bank before, isn't it? Okay. Right. Yeah, not bad, he's probably pretty assured that that's never seen the bank. First time's ever been caught. I shouldn't think that'd be very long before that grows into, um what's that, eight and a half isn't it?
Eight and, eight-six.
Eight-six, great stuff. Have a little try with that, another, yeah, pop him back. Just hold it in the water a sec. I reckon he's having a pretty good time, don't you? God dear, this is lovely. I feel like proverbial Sherpa at the moment. It's great, right. Lovely to see you lads catching all these. Nice, yeah I recognise that one again, lovely, single scale. Super stuff.
Right, yeah?
Yeah. Do you want me to drop him back over the top of the weeds? Alright. Okay. Alright?
Yeah.
Great stuff. Lovely, shall I just drop it back over the top of the weeds, I keep him low to the grounds. It's all water here, so it won't hurt. Disappearing to the depths. When you're letting these go Ryan, just, just make sure that they've actually recovered before they sort of go belt off. Yeah, just till they're starting to kick and go away. They put so much into it, he's away, there he goes. Lovely, great stuff.
I'll call you back in five minutes, alright?
Well done. Done it again. Go and help yourself, go and help yourself. So what's this, your fourth tonight is it? Fifth? God. She's under your other rod. Great. So you've had them on all rods now, haven't you?
Yeah, this was the one that I thought I'd have, I was gonna get another chance, it would be on this.
Yeah. Ooh, there he goes again. This misty's getting, uh, some worse, misty, misty. British. There he goes again. They've been crashing out here Ryan in front. Well done matey. Well that says unhooking isn't it? Well done. What's that, another dumpy one? Uh, the little, the little one's the wastling. That's it there. Double? Yeah, it's a double. Foul fish isn't it? Have a dumpy job. All that welly you gave it getting it out of the pads has, uh, has done the damage. Yeah, well done. Big head on it.
Big mouth for now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Can anyone get a common before the end of the week?
Go on. No, no, I had no commons, no, no. I'm surprised no one's had a grass carp. I thought they would have had a grass carp. Twelve and a half by looks of it. Funny shaped fish. Oh, no, no, no petrul that's a. Definitely a strange one that one.
We won through our one, won't it?
Yeah. There's no other marks, it's only your marks isn't it? Yeah. Definitely a strange one. Well, this would be another famous one, it's a common in red mire with no pelvic fins, you got this, this one with one peck. Great. It's weird shape. Great stuff. And another one bites at us. Pop him over the top.
Like this part when we caught that I think. I think he's caught one and caught that, I think. Now I like my nice and weak meat, no, no sugar. No squirt to the tea bag.
No, you've got it strong, strong.
Disgusting. That's good, mate. See, you need to have some milk in there.
Oh my god. That's not tea, that's just black water.
And sugar, it's not good for you.
Is that skimmed milk?
Um, don't know. Yeah. Long life, anyway.
Well, you didn't get a lot of sleep last night.
No. He woke me up. He should have left with me. I was away then.
Well, there was fish crashing in front of you.
If they was hungry, they would have found me bait somewhere, wouldn't they? No, they didn't. About ten minutes, I suppose.
That's right. You've still got a lot of fish in these pads out here. I think all that activity down the bottom yesterday, that shoved them all up this end.
I still reckon there's some resident bunkers down there though.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a few more fish crashed out. Have there been any down on the down wall this morning?
Um, couple, that's it. It was a lot, a lot last night. But then again, I reckon they just come down and go up there, night and day.
So how many have you had now?
Um, six runs, five fish.
Five fish?
But I reckon one of the runs might have been a liner. There's only like four bleeps and I was up there and it happened anyway. I just struck him at nothing. Yeah, five proper runs and five fish on the bank.
They're gonna wait first, are they?
Yeah, just wait.
What time did you catch it, James?
Fourteen pound dead.
Well done. There, another one. You've got the sun on it, it looks beautiful. Nice one. Can we get on with you, Presiding Dave? Do you want him round the other way?
No.
Just get him beside him, Dave. Then I'll take a picture.
Just say where you are.
For Jamie and his helper together. I'm gonna have a picture. And back wind at the moment.
Is it moving at all, Dave? Solid? Can you see where it is? Can you see where it is? Sling a boulder at it.
Got a straight pole.
Oh, he's got some stones.
Good lad.
Grab hold of it, Matthew.
Look at that lot. Whoa shit.
Keep that rod up.
Try and keep it moving towards you.
It's coming. Bloody clutty, going. I tell you, that's a good fish.
Got it, mate?
Yeah.
Keep it on the move if you can.
How's it look?
If you can keep it moving, it'll come in.
Go on.
He's a good kid, that Matthew.
That's looking good. He's got right to the edge of them pads now. Brilliant. I tell you what, it'd do ever so well if he gets this one out. He's, it's come from right the other side of those pads. Right through the very thickness of them. That's a good fish, I think, as well. Come on, son, keep it going. Come on, Matthew, keep it going. Oh, come on. Come on, Matthew. Oh, we're in diverice here. Go on, go on, go on. Yes. Oh, brilliant. Well done. Well done, Matthew. Good lad. Well netted, Dave. Nice one. You stuck, son?
He's stuck.
Just a little bit.
Great stuff. What have you got, Dave?
Nice mirror.
There it goes. I reckon you deserve that.
Of course, nicely.
It certainly is. Where's the mat?
It's up here.
Put that rod down, Matthew, because I've bitten one.
Fifteen pounds.
Won't surprise you, this one. Don't think it's as big as we first thought. Thirteen four. Well done, Matthew. Let's have you on video for posterity, mate.
Look, it's dorsal's up as well.
What a beautiful fish.
Right.
I thought we were in trouble when it went solid.
Mm, I did because we weren't going to get any of that weed.
That's right. But, I mean, all of a sudden it just bolted through the weed, didn't it?
Yeah.
You know, and then Matthew kept, kept the pressure on, bringing it back. So it kept its head up. It didn't get in the roots. So virtually it came straight through.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the trouble when, when we landed it were caused by the fact that it had just crossed that line and the lead had caught. Which is virtually why I had to use the waders.
Yeah.
But as soon as we got it in the net, bit of the line, no problem.
I thought we weren't going to get it out.
That's right. You know, but, uh, as I say, once it bolted through and Matthew kept its head up on the way back, it was beautiful. It was, it was just below the surface in the weed, no problem at all.
It might have been when I put the buoys out, see if I could scare it.
Well, you just don't know what happens. All of a sudden it just went, didn't it?
Yeah.
You know, and, I mean, it, it was solid. I mean, I would have sort of said ninety percent of the time, you'd have never got that fish out of there.
I've had, what, three, three of these past few days.
That's right.
Same thing and they're not going out.
You know, you can't explain it. That just seemed to want to get in the net and have its photo taken. You know, and that's, that's how it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you can't do anything about it. What do you reckon, Matthew?
Yeah, I think it came quite well after she came out the lilies.
Well done, Matthew. Alan will be around in a bit. He's going to take a few slides, have you? So that means all you lads, you've had a fish, haven't you? Everyone who's had a fish.
Everybody.
That's right. Well done, lads. It's been a nice weekend. That's what they live on. That's how they grow so large. Those little tiny creatures. Stack of protein in it. Everything they need. Why on earth they pick our baits up, we shall never know. That we can't simulate. All right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll pick it up for you in your... Okay. All right? Better come back towards you a bit. Beautiful. Lovely. What a cracking fish. Very, very nice. Well done, mate. You deserved that. Hold on. That's what I like to see. Magic. Ryan, you're a superstar. Lovely. Here, we covered well.
Yep. Right, unless one down went to go. Get a photo of this right at me. Right.
It's going to be ten, ten inches across the tower. Pretty impressive.
See the importance of an unhooking, mate?
Right. Beautiful. Turn him round. Beautiful. Lovely fish.
That is a brilliant picture.
Well done, mate. Super.
Is it out enough yet?
Yeah, it's lovely. It's absolutely perfect what you're doing there. Mr McDonald's mark too.
That's it, beautiful. Absolutely good. Bring the tower.
Oh, come on.
Till it up a bit.
Lovely. Brilliant.
Hang on. Turn it round to the sun again. That's the one. That's one of the nicest twinties I've ever caught. This is my seventh one and, uh, must say it's given me the most pleasure, I think, because it was my first French twenty. And, uh, I think I'll have to wait a long time for another one like this.
I don't know. You can always come back to France again, you know.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't mind coming back. It's a lovely lake and, uh, can't thank the Carp Society and Richworth and all the sponsors enough.
Well done. Go on then.
Yep.
Send it off with a kiss.
Go on then, get a photo of it.
Well done, Ryan. Remember that one for a while, won't you?
No. I think this is fins that'll live in my mind. The size of them, I just can't get over it.
Push him out a little bit deeper water.
Get his whole body down there. Going now.
Lovely. And you're like a true professional. Well, James, we're about at the end of our weekend now.
Yeah.
As you can see, we're just having to pack up, but, uh, more than anything, what do you think you've learnt over the weekend? I mean, we've showed you how to do rigs.
Yeah.
We've showed you how to sort of get on to fish. And, uh, obviously we've all had a few fish, but, I mean, what do you think you've learnt by it all?
Well, I've learnt to use heavier lines and, um, getting fish through lily pads and fishing in them. Um, spotting fish at long distance, I've learnt that. Yeah, I've learnt quite a bit in a couple of days.
And you've enjoyed yourself, have you?
Yeah, really enjoyed.
Oh, it's been magic, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's one lad on the complex who hasn't had a fish, has there?
No.
You know, and, um, we've, we've all sort of had a good time.
Yeah, it's been great.
But you, you're more than happy with your rig situation now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm tired of no problem.
No problem. He says no problem. I noticed, Mark, you've, uh, put that pole out there.
Yeah.
Um, what was the reason for that?
Yeah, having a bit of difficulty with the trees. Had to sort of find a way of fishing around corners. You could put it.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So it was a...
A little invention.
A slightly clever move, that, yeah. What have you caught?
Yeah, two twenties and a seven.
And they're both personal bests, is that right?
Definitely.
And you've caught an absolute monster.
Eight pound.
Thirty pound two, fully scaled mirror. Brilliant. What a result.
Yeah.
I bet you just didn't believe that that was going to happen.
No.
No.
Only three days at a lake.
That's right. It's incredible, really. So what do you think of the lake, anyway?
It's very good. Very good. Love coming again.
You'd love to come again? Yeah, I think we all would. What do you think of it?
I think it's very tidy. It's a lovely lake. All the lilies and everything. Lots of wildlife around.
It's very well run, isn't it?
Yes, it is, yes.
It'd be terrific if we had more waters like this in England. Um, well run, well managed, clean. Um, litter bins around the lake. Um, it's perfect. I just wish we had a lot of these waters in England.
Essex, as usual. The winners. The champions.
It's like I was saying earlier, you know, I think the Northerners have got the best anti-landing rigs I've ever seen. They just strike in and they fish us off, haven't they? And they've got screaming tails.
Yeah. I think we can teach them a thing or two, don't you? Yeah.
Well, I thought the carp up there were starting to get quite large, but obviously they're only used to like three pounds up there still.
Now, as it happens, um, Andy's gone down into the pads there with, uh, Ian, and hopefully he's going to pull out a whacker, so.
Yeah.
Keep our fingers crossed.
That's where they've been, haven't they?
That's right.
I'm just hoping Andy doesn't have to go in for it this time. Bit of a soak.
Yeah.
He didn't like it yesterday, did he?
No, that's right. That's right.
Pleased with what he got out there. It certainly seems to be where all the big fish are holding up.
So what's, um, all these little ornaments on your tackle then?
Well, I don't know. I'd just be a bit different. I think I'd customise it. The turtle at the back is a dog toy and I stole it off a dog. Because when I fished with Zen a few weeks ago, he, uh, has all things on his buzzer bars, like Nash and that.
That's right.
And I like that. And then, uh, in the close season, I was up Farlow's and I met Steve Briggs up there and he had turtles all over his Velkims.
Did he?
Yeah. So, uh, I told him, I asked him, like, what have you done that for? And he just says, I don't know, really. Just be a bit different. And, uh, I got them, uh, from a cereal packet, I think. Freelight type thing. There was Volkswagen stickers on them and pumers and everything, really. Nothing you can think of. My turtle at the back's done me well ever since I've used that. I don't think I've blanked.
Yeah?
Yeah. So it's working for me and always pay the lake and all.
Well, it's brought you, brought you luck here, anyway.
Just a little bit, eh?
Yeah.
Six fish for me now and one run missed.
So far, I think we've had something like fifteen fish.
Yeah? I didn't realise it was so many, you know.
Uh, you know, all the lads have caught, every, every junior that's, uh, come on the trip have caught, so.
It's what he wanted, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we've had a great time. Okay, well, let's carry on and see if we can get another one out. Twenty-six four. That's your third twenty pounder, isn't it?
Yep.
So you can't beat, you can't beat the L S six lad, really, can you?
Nah, nah. Northerners don't know it, do they?
Well, we've got some cracking pictures, Ryan. Turn him towards me. Tower's lovely.
That's the shot.
Beautiful.
Now what? There you go, see?
Yeah.
Hold on, Mark.
We have some pictures here for your, uh, over the mantle piece, Ryan.
Stick them all over the ass, let alone the mantle.
There's some fish in this lake, don't they?
Is that mine?
There's some fish.
Lovely scaly patterns, don't they?
Yeah, beautiful colour. Thought well, didn't it?
Yeah, not half. Maybe it is all. I think that's what scales are off his side, don't they? We don't know. When they rummage through them, I suppose they do themselves damage, don't they?
Yeah, they get through those pads.
I tell you what, Mick, I think we might be seeing a little bit more of this lad, don't you?
I reckon so. I reckon so.
A natural.
Whoa shit! How about that then? Terrific. Well done, Ryan. Yet again.
Saving it up, won't it?
Well done, mate. Terrific. Well, when Mr Felix said we was going to have a barbecue, I didn't realise it was going to be like this. What is this? Smoked trout, is it?
Yep.
Smoked trout.
From his own pond.
From his own pond.
Smoked by his wife.
Wine. Carp's eggs. I can't get over it.
That needs a new line in mini bodies, we shall. Recommended by Alan.
Well, this is what you call a spread.
Beautiful.
Have you all, uh, enjoyed yourselves?
Definitely.
Yeah? We've had a great time, so, uh, I reckon we all ought to, uh, make a toast. Yeah? Right. Here's to the carp side.